Order is Tuesday, December 12th of 2023. This is the Stoughton City Council. The first item of business would be the roll call. Kirk, Christian.
Okay, Jensen.
Did you push the button? I don't think you're here. Jensen's here.
Okay.
Thank you.
I cannot hear, I'm sorry. Uh, Payton.
I'm here.
Caravallo.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Sherlocki.
Here.
Ha- Hailey.
Here.
Schumacher.
Festively here.
Hirsch.
Is that me? Here.
Butler.
Here.
Lagaki. Thank you. Last name, Scanlon. Was that a here? Okay, I have eleven Alders present then, and my ask is absent and excused.
All right, thank you. We are certified of compliance with open meeting laws. Nobody was set up for public comment. But we do have Representative Jenna Jacobson is here, and she'd like to introduce herself and have a few comments. You just push the button there and the red light will come on and the floor is yours.
Wonderful, thank you all. Well, hello everyone, my name is Jenna Jacobson, and I represent the 43rd Assembly District in the Wisconsin Legislature, which includes the city of Stoughton. And I just wanted to stop by and say hello. Some of you I've met before, others I have not, but wanted to take a moment to introduce myself and deliver the 2023-24 Blue Book. They're a fun thing, a fun thing that the legislature puts out every two years that has interesting information about the legislature for that year, some Wisconsin history, light reading if you're a nerd like I am, or good falling asleep material if you need it. If anybody at home or in the audience is interested in a Blue Book, I'm happy to get you one. You can visit my website at RepJennaJacobson.com, and I, we will get one to you. Additionally, I just, again, should you ever have any issues or questions with a state-level agency, want to express your opinion on a piece of legislation that's before us, or just need some help navigating that system, please don't hesitate to reach out to our office. That's one of the big parts that we do. So, thank you.
Thank you for being here. Are there any communications from Alders? All right, here are none. We'll go into presentations. We have several. The first one is Landmarks Commission. Are you all here? I see Todd. What do you have? And just push the red button.
Yeah, annually, the Landmarks Commission awards an Historic Preservation Award to individuals who have gone above and beyond to preserve the historic nature of, actually, the nature of the Landmarks District. Traditionally, it's just been the landmark buildings, but now we have a whole Landmarks District. And this year, we had three, three awards to give. And the first one is to, and by the way, I'll pull the first one out. They're beautiful awards with a photo of the building and the name. I was blown away when I saw this. And Peggy Varigan arranged to have these all built. But I think they're beautiful, and I hate to get my fingerprints on them, so. Anyway, our first award is to Becky and Ed Guzman. They own the building that has Diakonos Designs in it. They also own Diakonos Designs. And they did a lot of work on their front facade and the tile in the front, and have just done a beautiful job of preserving that building. And...
Yes?
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am. No cash?
No, no cash. Yeah, no, the, the city pays for these awards, so there's no cash. Uh, the second award is to Dale Uter-Dovek. He owns the building that's the Masonic Hall facade, the Masonic Hall building. It's the oldest building, oldest brick building on that block. It's the tall one. Sun and Lace is the, is the business that's in there now. But they've done a lot of work restoring the brick, but also over the past two years. If you compare the way that building looks now to the way it looked two years ago, it's a dramatic improvement. It's a beautiful building, and I don't know, yeah? Now, I'll keep it in the packaging so I don't get fingerprints on it.
That's great. Thanks very much. I appreciate it.
And the final award goes to Samuel Crystal and Phil Knudsen. They have the Sheldon Building. This is one of the more notable buildings in all of downtown Stone. It's where the McGlynn's Pharmacy is now and Edward Jones behind it. Again, the work they did this year was to preserve the wood on that corner, cornice and the emblem there. That was a major project. But, but they've also, over the years, continually, they've replacing doors and windows, and have just done a beautiful job of maintaining that building. And I don't know if there's anybody here. Oh.
Thank you, Todd. Appreciate it.
And that's it.
All right, thanks for all you do with the landmarks. Our next presentation update is from Visitor Services, and Kelly Lapointe is here. Do you have a PowerPoint? Are you? All right.
I sent an updated one to Candy about 15 minutes ago, but that just has the, the animation, so.
The animation?
For the slides. Otherwise, the one that's in the packet is fine.
Okay, I'll go with that. Let me just pull it up here for you. Is this it?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, welcome, everyone. Thank you. I am Kelly Lapointe. The Events and Visitor Services Manager at Stoughton Chamber of Commerce. I run two distinctively different roles at the Chamber. One is the Chamber Events with Setnemi, Coffee Break, et cetera, and then the tourism through the Visitor Services Department of the Stoughton Chamber of Commerce. Tonight, I'm here to present the 2023 Marketing Activities from Visit Stoughton. Visitor Services is funded solely by the hotel tax revenue. It has a commission that includes representatives from Lodging, Attraction, Retail, Chamber of Commerce, and two at-large businesses. They oversee and approve the spending of the annual budget, so there's no formal motion needed tonight. So sit back, relax, and enjoy. In 2023, this was a proposed budget that was approved with an estimated $110,000 in room tax revenue to spend. Special projects of the $2,000 would be income with a wedding guide and a share, revenue share with our community guide. Administrative expenses is $22,800, and then operational expenses, which is the majority of marketing and advertising, at nearly $85,000. So bringing a total expense to spend of $107,000. All right, now let's slow down. Here is a graph representation of the room tax revenue for tourism and how that's changed from 2004. Now, this only reflects a portion that's been received by Visitor Services for this year. We are three-quarters in, so we will get the quarter four check in the start of the new year. Obviously, that big jump in 2020 and 2021 is with the addition of the True Hotel. Some spring advertising, so this is where you're going to miss the animation because I've overlapped them, but that's okay. I have a window display at the Beloit Travel Center, the Welcome Center down there. That's a far-left ad. That's a nice big window piece. I've created the 2023 Stoughton Wedding Guide. This is the third year that we put the wedding guide together. Now, this really highlights our, our at-home and our local wedding-based businesses for those tourism, tourists to come have their wedding here and stay in town. And then some print pieces in the seasonal travel guides. These are from different ones that get distributed throughout the state from different publications. Billboard advertising, I had two billboards on the Highway 18, east and west-facing to Mount Hob. So this was up March, excuse me, April through May to highlight the Setnemi Festival. And then some other billboard advertising. I had one up in the Columbus area with the Opera House and Lives Rice at different times. And then Bravo for Women, those are kind of the layered ones in there. They have a, they print every other month. So I had a six-page ad in every publication. And then the Victorian Holiday was in their holiday special, November, December, which I'll touch on in the fall section. Some other year-round advertising I've done is our Wisconsin Publications. It's a really pretty publication that's been done. I had a quarter-page ad in there, and you can kind of see the transgression. I'll allude to the rebranding of what Visit Stoughton did over the year. Now, the new print advertising piece I did was, this is called See Wisconsin, and this is by a print company out of the Dells area. Really pretty publication. Every page kind of has the same look, great styles, highlight different events in the area and different things to come see. So like I mentioned, a brand update. Worked with our company to kind of update the look and colors of what Visit Stoughton's brand is. The far left is what we've been doing for the past few years, since 2018. And then kind of the more muted colors on the right-hand side is what we have been migrating to throughout the year. And then we also updated the visitor map. This is always a big project, and as soon as you put it to print, you have businesses move across town. So this is just kind of a highlight of what our new brand looks like with the different colors. One side is the, the city as a whole and what those tourists would be looking for. So it's not all-encompassing with different businesses, but really, you know, your services, your hotels, your restaurants. And then on the flip side is our downtown area. And then just updating on some collateral that I use. The left is a, a letterhead. I like to put little welcome letters and gift bags that come through for people, or thank-you letters, or welcome notes, or whatever. And then the one on the right is a postcard. So I've been working with AAA magazine for advertising, and they have leads, so you can, they sign up to get leads about the community. So I just send these, these postcards out, QR code to the website. Really cost-effective. And actually, Inkworks did a beautiful job in updating this. So this is just the file I sent them, and they put some embellishments and gold coloring on there. It looks, it looks really nice. All right, and then as we look at some digital advertising, this is kind of our overall social promotion that we did over Setnemi. Now, there's four channels, four social media channels I'll be highlighting here. It is the festival, excuse me, the Stoughton to my festival, the Setnemi Classic, which is the Run-Walk, Visitor Services, and then the Chamber of Commerce. So the top one is a kind of our reach for the Chamber of Commerce in different posts. The second one is the classic. The largest one is the festival. And then the bottom one is our posts on Visit Stoughton. And this shows the graph of the top posts from each channel over the festival timeframe. The top one with, that's on Viking Games. This was put on through the Visitor Services channel and just highlighting that the Viking Games are back. The second one down was posted on the festival channel, Setnemi, Setnemi Festival. And this is where Josh Spriteer from News 3 was doing his Live in the 608, so highlighting that he was here in town. The third one is the Setnemi Classic, and we had the Pepperatzi. So obviously, it was our new year running through the community. We really wanted to get the neighbors out. We called it the Pepperatzi because we wanted them to take pictures. So this is kind of our post to highlight those activities. And then we also offered a Chamber Box matching program. So the bottom one is from this, the Chamber of Commerce Facebook channel. And then with Setnemi, I did put some money into some media coverage. So we had commercials running on WKOW and Channel 3000. We had all three news stations in town doing live coverage throughout the festival. So like I mentioned, Josh Spriteer was here Friday morning during setup. He got the first cream puff of the festival. Don't be jealous. And then Channel 3000, WKW, and 15 were all down for the 4 o'clock and 5 o'clock news and did some live interviews at that time. Other media coverage we got was Wisconsin State Journal, the ISMS, and then partner media coverage, Alexandria, Minnesota, Wichita, Kansas, and Biloxi, Missouri. Two of those three are Gray TV stations, which is a family company of NBC 15. All right, so kicking off the heels of Setnemi, we go into the summer. So I signed on with Mad Dog and Merrill. It is a Midwest girling show. They did their live recording at the Stoughton Fair. So we highlighted Vindicator Beef, which sells out of Cheezers, and they're fairly local. They used to live in Stoughton, now they're just out of town. I'm really excited to highlight their beef and pork product. This crazy crew did a good live session, and there's some, a good crowd there. They aired later July, and they'll actually air again the week of Christmas. So if you want to check out Mad Dog and Merrill, they're a local syndicated in 35 states. And then the next TV recording I had, we had the Fishing University crew come up from Tennessee. They wanted to highlight fishing on Lake Ganso. So Fishing Pros Charlie Ingham and Ben Baloo, they were here for three nights, so they stayed at the Quality Inn. We treated them to dinner at Viking Brew Pub, Wendigo, and Springer's, kind of get an overview of different fair that we have in the community. Had a great time fishing. Fishing didn't love the heat because they were here during that heat wave just after Coffee Break Festival, but they were happy to get a couple fish in there. Part of their recording is they do an educational session, so they want to educate the youth on what you can do as a passion for the outdoors. So we had a little session at Santill University. They had some of their sales pros from Precision Sonar, who were actually on fishing teams in college, which is kind of unique when I grew up in a hockey world, but. So a lot of kids were really interested in, in what they can do with a profession in the outdoors without, you know, different means. So really excited. That will air sometime in 2024. I don't have an air date yet. I talk really fast, I'm sorry. While they were here, they also, part of the, the media buy is they filmed a 60-second tourism commercial for us. So they have a great production crew. We hired on Emmy Fink, who is a local TV celebrity, we'll say. But she was a great spokesperson for Stoughton. She brought a great family here. They went to different shops, and we will be making a few commercials out of that footage. All right, and then as we get into fall, I signed on last year, actually, with Sherpa, which is a company that is content creator-based. We, I posed out adventures for people, and then content creators come. They kind of organically experience what Stoughton's all about. So the first one we had, they came on a beautiful fall Sunday, and they were able to experience some of the trails, some of the downtown shopping on Sunday. And then what's not posted in here, but they did hit up Viking Lanes and kind of did a story on family adventures that you could do here. Then the second one that came through was at the end of November, and it was a single gentleman. He stayed here for two nights. He got to enjoy the bed and breakfast. Kim and Scott are just amazing hosts, and he loved his time here. Did the Lives Rice tour, got a show at the Opera House, and really just enjoyed what downtown Stoughton has to offer for him. All right, it was kind of, as I mentioned earlier, in some of the year-round buys with Bravo. For their last edition, the November-December edition, I upgraded my six-page ad to be part of their small-town features. I think this is the third year I've done this. So highlight the Victorian Holiday weekend, highlight our activities around Shop Small Weekend, and some of the other holiday Opera House shows that were going on. All right, and then some just general social graphs that we have. This one is the display advertising. Display advertising, when you're looking at search engines or whatever, it's the little posts that you have on the side. So we kind of were at a benchmark. I have a set amount of what I spend each month. I increased that, actually flipped my social buys to my display ads in August. So that's the jump in, in our, in our display analytics, but reaching about 45,000 people. And this is a, just an overview of what our performance is on social advertising with our Facebook media bias. And just a comparison from 2022 to 2023. In 2022, our overall impressions were 585,000, and we jumped to over 1.2 million for overall. So it just over-doubled, or just doubled a little bit from the second year. All right, and then continuing up with our memberships. Visit Stoughton is part, a partner of Destination Madison. Destination Madison is the Destination Marketing Organization for Dane County. So they really help bring in people through Dane County and highlight the different areas there. Destinations Wisconsin is the Destination Marketing Organization for the state. They're working with local smaller communities as well as those larger ones. Big ones right now are Green Bay with the draft coming up, and Milwaukee with the Republican Convention, and another thing that I'll be teasing up here. And then Circle Wisconsin is group tour travel. So they work with different bus tours to bring into the Wisconsin area. So members of those three. All right, and as I said, we're working with Milwaukee. One thing, so these are a couple teasers that I'll be doing in 2024. As a big foodie, we should know maybe that Top Chef was filmed in Madison and Milwaukee and Door County. So I'm working on the commercial to be aired in, about Stoughton, be aired in the Madison Market and Milwaukee Market. But first, before the commercial comes out, I am working on an official visitor guide for Stoughton. So these are just kind of some concept looks to what the cover art will be. This will be a secondary publication to what our community guide is. So the Chamber will so produce a local community guide for our local residents, and then the visitor guide will be shared with those that are coming into town. And then we get to the 2024 approved budget. So looking at an estimated $125,000 in city room tax with an estimated $25,000 carried over from this year and just some of those projects that we were kind of looking at that didn't get to this year, but that will really help fund the production cost for that commercial that I can mention for Top Chef. Our special projects will be any advertising revenue with the visitor guide. And then you can see our administrative expenses and operational expenses, bringing just that net income of $5,000. But really, the goal for each year is for me to be spending all of that room tax on advertising and operations. Thank you. If I talk too long, or too fast, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for Kelly? Well, she's here. Go ahead.
First off, thank you. It's quite impressive of all that you've been doing. My question is, when you do your analytics, have you looked at how many visitors actually come here? And if, have you talked to local businesses? Have they seen an increase in customers or tourists? I mean, we can gauge it from the hotels, but can you look at, have the downtown businesses and other businesses in Stone actually benefited from all this? I mean, I know it's this new, I mean, you're, you're, and it's going to take a while to catch on that Stoughton is fantastic, but, you know, I was just wondering if that's part of what kind of data that you collect? So we can say that, look at this.
Correct. Currently, I do not have that data for this past year or the years prior, but I'm working with a company that is able to actually achieve that. So they can put in, I mean, there's those big trackers that I don't know all the words on, but they can track with the advertising mediums and then see where those credit card uses and sales are coming from, and then be able to track. So that is in the near future. Thank you.
Any other questions for Kelly? All right, thanks again.
Thank you.
All right. And not to be outdone, but we do have one more presentation. And this would be our annual, we've made this annual on our snow removal process. Well, so if we do the presentation, we won't get any snow, but if we don't do it...
Yeah, well, luckily, Mayor, because of Ellen, you know we're not going to have snow this year. So I'm not really sure why I'm doing this presentation, but I'll, I'll give it anyways. So I'm Director of Public Works Brett Aborf, those of you that don't know me. And thanks for the opportunity to talk, the opportunity to talk about our Snow and Ice operation. Obviously, it's one of those operations that touches every doorstep in the community, so it's really important that we get it right. Who's got the, next slide, please? All right. Oh, boy. So we have over 120 lane miles of roadways that, that we plow. Of course, as you all know, we are growing as well, so we keep that in mind as we do our forecasting for planning, especially our five-year plans. We have eight residential routes, downtown route, two cul-de-sac routes. We have over 44 cul-de-sacs that we have on that route. Walking paths, we have 56 of them. This year alone, we grew by 1.76 miles of multi-use pass, which is great for the community. That's one of those things that we need to plan for when we look at staffing. And parking lots, we have 10 of those. So we break it down into our main plow routes, then residential plow routes. So our, our main roads is those, those routes that are our main roads, like 51, Roby Road, near the schools, the hospital, of course. So the biggest thing is that we keep those open during the storm as much as we can with the staff that we have. And then we also do some light salting in those areas just to make sure that our emergency services have the ability to get out and do what they need to do during the storm. Next slide, please. Residential routes, we have eight plow routes. We plow curb to curb. This is typically after the storm has, has ended. We send crews out. They salt as needed. We salt our mains, our secondaries, of course, our inclines. If we have a full staff, it takes us roughly seven, eight hours to the entire city, which is actually pretty good. Those that are first on the route love us. Those that are in hour eight probably think we take too long. That's just the way it goes. Cul-de-sac routes, we put this together a few years ago. So we put our loaders into the cul-de-sacks instead of putting our large trucks in the cul-de-sack. If you put a large truck in a cul-de-sack, it takes about 10 to 15 minutes to plow that cul-de-sack. We put loaders in there, and it takes them less than 10 minutes to get that done. The biggest thing is we keep our large trucks going forward instead of jockeying around in a, in a cul-de-sack. So that saves us a significant amount of time when it comes to our, our overall plow route, plow routes. Most people don't know this, but the day after a storm, our staff has to come back in and do the downtown. So our work is not done after the snow is, you know, is done snowing. We plow for the first time. We have to come back in and plow downtown out and remove that snow and take it to our snow dump. So the biggest thing is the downtown area really has no terrace area. So we remove that snow so we can open up those parking lanes and be open for business. Parks, so the park staff is responsible for removing snow from all of our city-owned buildings, parking lots. This is a critical operation because of potential liability, slips and trips and falls. So downtown, we want to have that clear within 24 hours. Typically, it's within a couple hours after the snow is, is done that we actually get the downtown done. The rest of the city, we want to do within 48 hours. I'd say it's going to be much quicker than that. Salting and pre-wetting, the biggest thing with salting is, is we train on this. Our mindset is that every chloride that we put down ends up in the Ahara. That's our mindset. And so we are very judicious in how we salt. Obviously, there's definitely a line on salting too much or salting too little. Safety is, is number one. However, we are very conscious of how much salt we use. Each truck is calibrated. We know exactly how much salt is going out the back of the truck. Typically, we want to stay in around that 300 pounds per lane mile. And we do pre-wet in the salter. So by pre-wetting, that reduces the scatter of the salt, and also making the salt wet activates it a little bit quicker. So we look at a pretty good practice when it comes to that, and we know exactly where we're putting out the back. Our, our parking snow emergency ordinance, as you can see, it's somewhat convoluted. So basically, from midnight to 8:00 AM for three consecutive nights when we call a snow emergency is, is our ordinance. So it's even odd. So at midnight is actually when it goes into effect. So you have to park on the correct side of the road. If you park at 10:00 in the evening, you have to account for that midnight changeover in the date. So I wish Chief was here, but they play a huge role in, in providing enforcement for this. Usually, the first couple of storms, they're very busy. I ventured to guess they take, take it over 100 vehicles the first couple of storms. The biggest thing is that we get cars off the road so we can do our job for you. So biggest thing is if you don't have to park on the road, please don't. Park in your driveway, park in a city lot, park wherever you need to, just, just off the road so we can get in and get out and do our job. The problem is when you park in the road, we have to go around you, creates a huge wind roll. I'm sure you've all seen those. That next night, we have to... That next night, we have to come in and push those back. Luckily, the cars are following, hopefully, the cars are following the ordinance and move to the other side. Then we plow that, that wind roll out. Chances are, it goes back in the driveway and they're not very happy with us or your neighbor's driveway. So the best thing you can do is just stay off the road, please. Snow emergency notifications, we have a plethora of, of different outlets that we reach out to. Email notifications, so everyone can sign up for an email notification on our city website. You can sign up for that. TV stations, usually the Madison area, regional radio stations, on the official city's Facebook page, we'll put out a blurb and then post it on the city's website. Challenges, we have a few. Next slide, please. Is that it? No. Like I just mentioned, cars parked in the road. Like I said, if you're off the road, we can do our job, get curb to curb, get things open for, for travel. That second picture on the right-hand side there, we have cars parked across from each other. These trucks are very big. They have wings on them. It's tough to get through, especially some of the older neighborhoods with the, the roadway is not very wide. So please get off the road if you can. This is a constant battle. So we, you know, do our, our job is to get the snow off the road. It's not your job to put snow back in the road. So please help us help you by keeping snow in the terraces or in your lawn. And, and also keep in mind that when we get done plowing, we also have to go home to our own driveways and shovel our driveway and, and the wind roll that we may leave behind for ourselves. So we're not immune to, to that. Also on the right, oh, sorry, the right-hand side, a lot of contractors, and we try to work with them, plow snow out onto the roadway. I'm very cognizant, there's only so many places to put snow, but please clean up after yourself. We don't have to come back and, and deal with your mess and our, our residents don't have to run into a, a big snowball like in the middle of the road like that. Garbage cans in the roadway, this may seem trivial, but these are obstacles that we have to go around. If you can imagine driving a large plow, plow truck, we do the curb cut with a wing plow and try to make, you know, go around each individual trash can is very cumbersome and it doesn't allow us to get to the curb. So please, if you can, put it in your driveway or shove out a little area in your terrace and that's where you should put your, your trash can. Mailboxes, we never hit those, but so that the biggest thing is that you follow USPS guidelines when it comes to the height and setback of your, your trash can. We do everything we can to stay off the, the curb, but we get close enough to get the snow to a curb. It's, it's very difficult sometimes, so please make sure that you're following USPS guidelines. Also check to make sure that your mailboxes, that the, the, the post is in good condition. If it's rotten and it falls over, we're not going to replace that. Keeping up the future growth, obviously, we have our, our pulse on the growth of the community, obviously, working with council in, in, in the five-year capital projects. Also, you know, planning for future staffing. We always have this in mind. So, you know, that steady, smart growth is something that we, we enjoy working with you all on. When it comes to, to staffing, we got to make sure they're keeping, keeping step with Plow drivers are, are just doing their job. Be patient, you know, we can't be everywhere at once. It's impossible. But like I talked about, seven, eight hours is actually a really good time when it comes to plowing an entire community. I don't want to compare us anywhere else, but I think we're, we're right up there with, with speed and how we do it and do it safely. Slow down, stay back. These are large trucks. We can't always see you, so please just stay back and let us do our thing. The other thing too is stay home. If you don't need to travel, don't be out there. Let us do our work, let us get it done, and then you can go about your business. Any questions? It's not going to snow anyways, so.
Alder Person Peyton asks a question.
Sure. Really appreciate everything that you and the team do. It's great, absolutely necessary. Have a question about your notifications. Have you thought about doing text notifications as well or using that type of a service?
That'd be a great question that we can follow up with IT on. I know we do the, the email, but I'm not sure about text, if, if they can do the reverse texting or, we can talk to IT about.
I know that, I had previously lived in Madison for a little bit and they do have a text alert service with snow emergencies about what side you're supposed to park on the street. It'd be interesting to see how it would work in, in our area.
Yeah, great.
Secondly, and this is a fun one, do we name the slow, snow plows? And if we don't, is there the opportunity to have like a submitting names and fun kind of involve the community for the necessary service that we have?
I'd say there's always opportunity. In a previous community that I worked for, we did paint the snow, snow plows. It was a great thing that we, we'd worked with the elementary school on and they had a couple of design first and then we kind of, you know, put it on the, the plow. It doesn't last very long, unfortunately. It's a rough environment. I have seen communities do some, some naming competitions. Some are a little harsh, but, but, no, I, I think the public engagement is, is huge, especially starting with the, the kids, starting with the youth. Sometimes they're the best educators for, for their parents, myself included. So I think looking at those opportunities is something we, we can certainly do.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? I queued up one on the downtown snow cleanup. I know there's a few downtown business owners here tonight, so what can they do to help specifically in the downtown?
Yeah, the biggest thing is getting the, the snow out to the curb, just beyond the curb into the gutter line. That allows us to get in there with our equipment to get it, you know, moved into wind rolls. The other thing is round benches and garbage cans and poles and things like that, that you make sure that you shovel around that for, for everybody to enjoy. I know some of the benches don't always get the attention that they deserve.
Brett, what the downtown area, they need to get the snow into that curb area within 24 hours after the snow stops or?
Correct, correct. By ordinance, so after the snow has ended, they have 24 hours to clear the snow. And so during that, that first 24 hours, just keep in mind, we're doing the, our normal plow routes. The guys and gals go home then and, and get rest and they come back that next night and then do everything downtown. So within that timeframe, within 24 hours, it's, it's imperative that they get the snow out to the curb line so we can get it hauled away.
Great, thanks.
And I just want to, you know, give Brett and his team a big thanks. One thing you'll notice, if you get emails or phone calls during the snowfall, if you can just forward them to myself or to Brett, they're all over it. They look at a phone call, you know, as constructive criticism.
Yeah, it's, you know, we definitely believe in continuous improvement. There's always something that we can do better. There's new technologies out there, text messages, things like that. So we're always looking for opportunity. So yeah, again, please, for those, to me, don't try to answer any questions because maybe it's, you know, in the heat of the moment, some, some people get very upset when we put snow in their driveway or the different type of snow. If we get a wet, heavy snow, people get ornery, myself included. So, you know, I'll handle those types of things. That's, that's what I'm here for. So like Mayor said, please, just throw those on to me and I'll, I'll take care of it. All right.
For residents who have sidewalks in front of their houses, is it 24 hours to clear those as well?
So great question. Outside of downtown, it's 48 hours.
Forty-eight hours.
Yep. And I keep, keep in mind too, if you live on a corner, it is a responsibility to clear the snow from the, the curb ramp. Keep in mind, those with disabilities do rely on, on that being cleared. We do try to send things out to remind people that that is their responsibility. Just keep in mind for those that, that have mobility issues, that they are counting on you to, to do that.
All right. Anything else? Thanks again.
Thanks for your time.
Okay. We're still at communications and presentations. I had a couple. First of all, there is a meeting in this room Thursday night at 5:00. We're hosting the meeting. The meeting is being put on by the DNR and that's in regard to the first permit, which is the underpass that will go down from the powerhouse underneath the bridge as part of the, the River Park project. So that's a meeting that is here and is also available on Zoom if you'd like to attend.
Five o'clock.
Yeah, 5:00 here on Thursday night. And then for those that are up for reelection or, or looking to run for city council, the application period is open. Candy, did you want to touch on that a little bit quick?
Yeah, I can. Um, yeah, all the elders that are up for reelection, I did email the packet out a few weeks ago and so you can go ahead and start circulating your papers now. You need a minimum of 20 signatures and a max of 40. The papers are due January 2nd by 5:00 PM to me at the clerk's office. And if you decide not to run, the non-candidacy paper is due to me by December 22nd. And I have received that paperwork from Alder Hiley and that is for District Four. So any questions, just give me a call or email me and I'm happy to help you out with those papers.
All right. And the last thing I want to mention is you might have heard that Rodney Scheel is, is going to be retiring next year.
He's not, not allowing him to.
So I wanted to at least recognize Rodney tonight and thank him for everything. You have a date, don't you?
What? So you're leaving that soon? No, I thought you were like leaving in March, not that quick. Well, thank you Rodney for everything you've done. I mean, you wore so many hats. I mean, you used to be our IT person. You take care of the buildings. You not only design everything, you're a man of many skills and you're going to be greatly missed.
Thank you.
So thank you for your services for so many, many years.
Appreciate it.
And we're really not going to let you go. But if you do sneak out, enjoy your retirement, it's well deserved.
I will, thank you.
All right. And that takes us into our business. The first item for business would be our consent agenda and I would entertain a motion to approve the items that are in the consent agenda.
I, I have one thing. I don't know if this is on the consent agenda or if this is on the minutes from last council meeting. Or is that all in the same?
It's all in there.
Same pile.
Yep.
There is an item that is R 187 2023, which was the PFAS thing. And it has me highlighted, question mark, and I don't believe I was that person.
It was me. I voted in the negative on that one to clarify for the agenda, minute, minutes, sorry.
Okay, we need to change that in minutes, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, because it, well, it, it says motion carried 10 to one and then it has my name with a question mark after it. So I guess it wasn't clear on who that vote was.
Okay. Did you catch that Candy?
I did, thank you.
Okay. All right, thanks for that. Anything else? So then I would entertain the motion for the consent agenda.
With that correction, I'd move to approve.
All right. Motion by Jensen, is there a second? Second by Sherlucky, would anybody like anything acted on separately? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, that motion carries. We have a couple items, if they come up, that are coming from Public Safety. And the first one is ordinance 31 of 2023, and this would be a second reading. There it is. Alder Person Jensen.
Thank you. Yes, second reading for ordinance 31 2023, amending ordinance chapter 70 dash 176 by creating subsection 91, parking prohibited at all times. And I would move for approval.
And is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Legaki, Alder Person Jensen.
Yes, this is, subsection 91 is referring to Oak opening drive south from Rutland Dun Town Line Road to the South Flatline for the 51 West Development. There are photographs in the packet showing the area and I believe that Rodney and Chief Jenks covered most of the issues and the reasons why in the last meeting. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
All right. Are there any questions on this ordinance? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, that motion carries. Next one is ordinance 32, Alder Person Jensen.
Sorry, thank you. I keep forgetting. Used to be the old ones.
That's why I'm here.
Here's the second reading for ordinance 32 2023, amending ordinance chapter 70 dash 181, no parking during school hours. Parent one, I guess I'm not going to read all of that. And I would move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by, was it Alder Person Butler, Alder Person Jensen?
Yeah, this, we're changing on Lincoln Avenue between, oh, it says west side of Lincoln Avenue between Jackson Street to 800 Lincoln, no parking signs will be erected accordingly. This again was covered quite adequately last meeting, as you can see in the photos. Let's see, I think the best one is the one that looks north. You see the school on the left-hand side and the housing on the right-hand side. The right-hand side would be parked, there is parking there before it was prohibited, even though we never got it marked. So the part, the parking would be allowed down to basically to the driveway going into the high school parking lot. So this is to help with the, what was it, the orthodontic office?
Yes.
I think was somebody from the orthodontic office supposed to be here? Oh, they were supposed to.
Hello. I'm on Zoom. If anybody's listening, I'm, I'm for permission in my office.
She's, so they have a representative here to answer questions or, or if, if you wanted to make a comment, you can go ahead.
Oh, thank you so much. No, thank you so much. We just, we have a wonderful team at the orthodontic office and we, because of the parking situation, some of our, our awesome team members have just started to park far away and I'm the orthodontist there. So I, as soon as they walk in through the door, I, I become their mom and I just want to protect them and keep them safer and closer to the office so I can look after them in those winter weather and look after them in the dark when they're heading to their cars. So I appreciate this, being on the agenda.
All right. Thank you for being here. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed, that motion carries. All right. Next item is the resolution to adopt the T-NOSIC Park Master Plan. And this one here went through the Park and Recreation Committee, Alder Person Caravelo.
Yes, thank you. This is Resolution R 191 of 2023, a resolution to adopt the T-NOSIC Park Master Plan, and I say move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Peyton, okay. Anything you want to add? I know we have a, a presentation we can do tonight as part of this.
I think I'm basically just going to let the presentation speak for itself.
All right. And Emma's here from MSA and let me stop sharing here and then I think you'll be able to share your computer and then you'll have to turn on the mic there. Can you fit all that on there? There it is.
I can't see all my things, so we're just going to present it like this. So yes, the
So yes, the T-Nasik Park Master Plan. My name is Emma Wenman from MSA Professional Services. I'm a landscape designer. And I've been working on this project for the past year and working with the city of Stoughton, Parks and Rec Committee. So thank you for having me here today and listening. So just to give you an overview of the project, we had a couple phases starting in January of 2023. Went through public engagement, stakeholder engagement, talking with the Parks and Rec Committee and here today presenting to you. The general project goals and objectives were to provide a neighborhood green space for the Kettle Park West Development, offer amenities and programming for people of all ages and abilities, be mindful for potential park expansions as the development itself is phased, and then emphasize the meaning of the T-Nasik Park name, which means Maple Tree Lake in Ho-Chunk, and provide educational opportunities on the Ho-Chunk land. So as part of this process, we went to, it involved stakeholders within the nearby areas. And some of the ideas they had for this space were sledding hill, having shelter, exercise equipment, off-street parking, and then passive activities. Kettle Park West Senior Living Facility is right there. So they wanted to potentially hold events at this space and just have space for grandchildren to come and visit with their grandparents in this park. And also, we talked to some bike enthusiasts in the area. And they wanted to see a pump track or bike amenities in this park space as well. So we came up with initially two concepts. And we presented these at two of Stoughton's music nights this summer. And it got community feedback in that way. And so people really liked the amount of variety we had in Concept One, the opportunity for accessible play within the playground, and then preserving the natural areas and adding in more native plantings, providing parking for the users of the park, and then just the passive use of walking paths. So going into the actual master plan itself, the amenities that we would like to offer include a bike maintenance station. There are bike trails that will connect to this as the park and the nearby neighborhood develops. General amenities like the pet cleanup stations, water fountains, bike parking, and then the shelter and restrooms for event space, multi-use paths, as well as prairie walking paths for that natural element. And then passive and active activities such as bird watching, the opportunity for a sledding hill, the bike park in Skills area, and overlooks, and just passive space. So the park master plan itself here, you can see a small parking lot with 16 spaces located off of Oak Opening Drive for users of the park space. And this is paired with a shelter and restrooms, a playground, and then a sport court. So basketball, tennis, or pickleball could all be lined for multi-use on this court space. And then you have the addition of the pump track for that more active element and for more teen and older people. And then you have the opportunity to phase in more bike skills areas, multi-use, multipurpose green space for field sports and recreation, as well as the potential of park expansion with the expansion and phasing of that neighborhood development, which would include potential for a sledding hill on the existing kind of wooded knoll that is right beside this park space. So I will actually take any questions or comments if you have any. Otherwise, that is all I have.
All right, thanks for being here. Anybody from the committee have anything they want to add before we open it up to questions? President Hirsch.
No, I think I, one, I commend you, one, for listening to the community and getting their input. And then I think what the committee did was blend a lot of the different ideas together to try to accommodate as many of the ideas from the community. So I think you did a great job in presenting it. And I look forward to having this great park.
Yeah, thank you.
Alder Person Legaki.
I too think that this is a really great project and thank you for listening to all. Just a question about how this may relate to the upcoming trails that we hope to link to Madison. Can you just say a little bit more about the decision to put in? I am a former mountain biker. I won't be mountain biking anymore, but I'm a gravel biker now. And so can you talk anything about the intention and possibly relating to the trails that are coming and connecting us to Madison?
I can speak very little on that. I don't know fully about the connections to Madison. But yes, these trail connections are all part of the planned parks and trails connections. My company has been working with the city to develop some of those trails as well. So the connection south here will go to 138, which goes to Oregon. And then, yes, it connects to the entire network, which eventually the goal is to connect to Madison.
I think I might be able to add something.
Thank you for your answers, and really it's probably worth it.
So, yes, connectivity, there's, will be a lot from this point, I think. Like if you take Oak Opening Drive, when that's in to the north up towards Rutland Dun Town Line Road, there will, on, at Highway 51 near Rutland Dun Town Line Road, there's going to be an underpass. So for a bike ped underpass under Highway 51. So you'll be able to swing around, go east, I guess, for a ways to connect up to the Lower Yarra River Trail, which will then at some point actually be a trail connecting to Madison. They're working on the next piece of that right now. That goes across the north part of the lake from Lake Igansia State Park to Fish Camp Park. And then as you see on this illustration here, what's designated as future trail connection going towards Oregon. At some point, probably in the way future, there will hopefully be an actual trail going all the way west to Oregon. Also, if you take another connector piece going up north of this, just getting up to Rutland Dun Town Line Road, you'll be able to head, that's freshly paved, and you'll be able to head west all the way to, turns into Netherwood Road in Oregon. So, and then there's more connection opportunity there. So there'll be a lot of trails connecting in Stoughton and to Stoughton.
I really like hearing about the connectivity, but yet at the same time, I'm wondering, is this, like for some people who may be venturing from the Madison area to Stoughton, things like this are going to draw them in for now as a destination point, as a place to come and do and finish off and enjoy and do. And I'm just, I'm very hap, I was not aware of, yeah, I've seen stuff like this in Colorado. It's not going to necessarily be at those levels. But this, this looks like great ways to get people out there and exposed and just draw people in to work on stuff. That, this is very wise. Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Alder Person Reeves?
Just echoing what I'm hearing, that I really like the variety. I'm not, you know, I think that the playground, the standard playgrounds from years ago are, you know, sort of an easy way out, but are not very attractive to what people really like to do. So I like the trails, I like the, you know, the bike station. So I, I hope that we see this as how we will plan parks in the future. You know, you can only do so many of those splash pad things and slides and swings. And I just think we have, can use our imagination. So I appreciate this plan a lot. Thanks.
No, and I just want to put out, that's what Park and Recs Committee and the Director for the Park and Recs Division is, is not only to have bigger parks that are connected, but also connecting our trails. And thanks to Phil for really kind of mapping that out and figuring that out. So we are on the map. And exactly, our intention was to bring more tourists in and to help our downtown and our other local businesses. So thank you for recognizing it, that, you know, it is piece by piece coming together. And once we get the riverfront trails and that's connecting to other trails too, that would be great. Which we'll hear about shortly.
All right, Director Sheil has something to add.
Maybe if I could just highlight that the project that was undertaken this year was pretty significant. From this park, Jackson Street already has a shared use path on the north side of Jackson Street all the way to 51. As part of the Jackson Street work that was done this year, a shared use hard surface, essentially a concrete wide sidewalk, was installed on the south side of Jackson Street over towards Silverado Drive. And why that was important is because it now links to the newly improved trail that was installed from Jackson Street all the way up through, past Roby Road and all the way through the 51 West Development. And that's a pretty substantial project. There was an existing gravel path, if you will, around Virgin Lake, around Virgin Lake and around Paradise Pond. That's now been fully improved with about a 10-foot wide asphalt path. So there's, there's really good connectivity that's coming together. You know, the Stoughton Trailers development to the north is anticipated to encompass some of that going forward, as well as the underpass that was highlighted before. So that west side has certainly seen a lot of investment recently.
Thank you for that. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. So all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. And let me get back to my screen here. The next item is R. 192 of 2023. This one was at the Finance Committee earlier tonight. Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, this is R. 192 of 2023. This is a resolution to commence the planning and creation of mixed-use tid number 11 using ALARS. I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Reeves, Alder Person Schumacher.
This will, this tid would encompass the area that would be being developed by STI, the Stoughton Trailers property. Financial impact was 17,000, but I think if we do approve both of these in with the other tid, that we would see some savings on that. Is that true, about $5,000-ish?
Correct, 5,000 on each.
That's about it on that.
Okay, and I would add, it would be covered with our cost reimbursement agreements. So it would be, the tab would be picked up from STI. We had a meeting with them last week, which I thought was a productive meeting. And coming out of that, we really wanted to move forward with the TIF planning because there's, you know, timelines and public notices that are involved with that. And we thought we could get that process started while we're working out the details of the developer's agreement. Anything you want to add, Attorney Mathie or Attorney Dregney?
No, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, are there any questions? Hearing none.
Actually, I will add, Gary added helpfully, I think, at Finance Committee, just making sure everyone understands, this obviously is not approving the creation of a TIF district or approving anything else, it's just authorizing the process to move forward.
All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. Item number 10, discussion and possible action regarding the offer to purchase at 521 Glacier Marine Drive. As you're aware, we do have an offer to purchase on four-plus acres of land there. We do have a couple guests here tonight that can kind of give us an idea of what they'd like to do with that land out there. And then we can have a discussion. And then after that, if we so choose, we can go into closed session to discuss the details of that offer. So come on up, Michael, and you can introduce yourself and kind of like what you did at Finance, just push the button there and you'll be good to go.
Great. Hi there, my name is Michael Carlson. Thank you for the opportunity to join you all today. I'm here with Mr. Richard Mumma, who is the owner of Flocler, which is a hair and skincare beauty company that's looking to create a light production facility up at 521 Glacier Marine Drive up on the north side. I'm here today wearing a couple hats. I work for the architecture and engineering company, Raymaker Architecture and Engineers, that's working with Richard in the, in the architecture of the building and the design of the building. And then I'm also a licensed real estate broker. So I'm also here on behalf of Richard today relative to the offer to purchase. And would be glad to answer any questions related to that. The Flocler facility is intended to be essentially a two-phase project. The first phase is the one that we're looking at here. And will be about a 30,000-square-foot industrial, light industrial building up on that Glacier Marine Drive to be followed then in a few years, once that's at capacity, with a second phase that gets added on to that to expand that building upwards of, to about 80,000 to 100,000 square feet at full, at full production capacity. We're working with Ideal Builders out of Madison. We've been working with them for several months now. They've been instrumental actually in helping us work out the timelines for the offer to purchase, as well as, you know, evaluating the construction plans as we're, as we're developing those plans with Richard. Our current timeline right now hinges a bit on when we finally hit sort of day zero of the purchase offer. And then we have a time clock that extends beyond that, that ends in early April, ideally for the final plan commission approval of our site plan for the project. The time period between now and then, from when the offer is accepted through closing then, in, call it mid to late April, you know, will involve pretty standard due diligence, surveys, environmental studies, geotechnical borings, to make sure we've got good soils out there. And to identify any soil remediation, we need to do good civil engineering, the architectural work and so forth. And those different contingencies are outlined then, and those due diligence items are outlined in the offer to purchase. In terms of some, some other additional kind of key dates that we're looking at, given where we're at in the plan development right now, we're looking at an early to mid-February timeline for getting the final plans, too ideal for pricing and for them to be submitting out. And then with a final pricing review and starting the formal process of contracting, finalizing that bidding process in mid to late March. And then an anticipated groundbreaking after permits are pulled in mid to late May. So things are moving well with that schedule. And it's been a real pleasure working with Richard and with his team and just an excellent team of consultants in the background that I'm learning things every day as this project develops. So it's, it's been a real pleasure to work on that. So I'll turn the microphone over to Richard here. And I'm glad to come back up to answer any questions that might be specific to the offer, if I could otherwise be useful. Thank you.
And this is the piece of land that would be next to the former NAFA building, between that and the incubator buildings. So it'd be right across from ME Roth. There's a four-acre lot there. And, and Richard's here to kind of give us an overview of who he is and what the company does and why we should, you know, become partners.
Absolutely. My name is Richard Mumma. I'm the founder and CEO of Flocler. I've been in the business for about 23 years now. And when I started my business and up to now, I manufacture my high-end hair products from China, 50% of it from Guangzhou, China, and the other 50% from Homewood, Illinois. During COVID, the supply chain that we had set up was stretched and affected our business negatively. I had to lay off a lot of employees, the business plummeted. And since then, we've worked hard to bring the business to where we are growing rapidly now. And one of the things that my team and I set to do was to bring the production from China back into the U.S., specifically to Wisconsin, and also to move the production that we have with a contract manufacturer in Homewood, Illinois, back into Wisconsin. that we have with a contract manufacturer in Homewood, Illinois, back into Wisconsin, so that we can also not only create jobs in Wisconsin, but also to help with the state's goal of increasing exports. The state, both the state and federal government's goal of increasing exports to Europe and the, the world at large. As Michael pointed out, the first phase of the project will be 30,000, 31,000 square-foot facility that, once completed, we will work, we, we think we will reach capacity about two years, and at that time, we hope to increase the size of the facility, the, and the land will allow us to do that, to about 80,000 to 100,000 square feet. We also were interested in another piece of land, but there is some discussion on how we would do that, because we wanted to, there is a separation between the two pieces of land, and we wanted to create an R&amp;D innovation center. We have some, some ideas of how we want to do that, some greenhouses, aquaponics and stuff that we are excited as a team to, to do in the second phase. I don't know if you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to take them. So I manufacture premium hair products. I mainly, in the U.S., supply to salons, and globally, I supply to the Caribbean, to Canada, to the UK, and I have a distributor in Brussels who handles most of the EU. I used to supply China, but we had some trademark issues there, and it's under litigation right now, and we have some distribution in Africa. So we have a world, a global expansion program that we have, so that we can make sure that the facility that we'll be building here will be at capacity from day one.
And just to follow up on that, what separates your products from some of the others that are out there?
We, our products are organic-based. We want, we, we use ingredients that are not aggressive and affect consumers negatively over, over time. That's the main thing, that, and, and the quality is high while maintaining a competitive price. So like, my competitor with my first brand, Argan Oil, Moroccan Argan Oil, is Moroccan Oil. My shampoos have, a lot of salons that use them tell me that my shampoos are comparable to their shampoos, and the same size shampoo bottle for them would cost $25, mine costs $12. But the quality is the same, and so that is my competitive advantage, and it has worked for us very, very well.
Okay, thank you. President Hirsch, did you have a question?
Of course I have questions. And I think Jean had her hand up too, right? Did you have your hand up first?
I, I just was going to ask a little bit about the product. You, you did say shampoos and oils. Is it primarily to clean and condition hair, or do you go even further, like into the very creative colorings and permings and?
So that is, that is what my team and I are working on, and part of the reason why we decided to, to take our, our own, the manufacturing process to ourselves, because we have some new and innovative products coming out, styling products, and we are coming up with a skincare line called Ultimate Expressions, and a men's line called Ultimate Provado, which will be launching in the second quarter of next year. So we have a lot of stuff coming up, and we're trying to make sure that our formulas are not shared with the contract manufacturers, but we keep it in-house and are able to capitalize on our innovations.
Thank you very much. And, and all of your products are organic then, including the skin line that may be coming?
Well, the certification of organic or natural is, you know, so we try to be as, as, as natural as possible.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. One, thank you for coming to us, and we, we love having new companies come to Stoughton. With respect to your product, you were saying that you might be doing some more R&amp;D, and then you have manufacturing. I'm thinking about, this building is close to the Yahara River, and we're trying to keep that clean. Do you have any waste products that we should be concerned about? And how do you handle waste products? I mean, you say you're organic, but is it organic just because you use oil, or you're using organic crops? I'll, I'll just stop there, and then I have a number of other questions.
Well, that's why, when she was talking about organic, I was saying that the designation of organic and natural is subjective, but we, our, our manufacturing process will not be using any aggressive, we don't have aggressive ingredients, corrosive ingredients in our manufacturing process. We are working with, is it the fire department, Michael? We've given them the, you know, the, the ingredients that we are using, none of it is, is as corrosive as maybe. And then the way we will be handling the, the waste from production, we are also working with the cities. Is it, is it the fire department we're working with on that?
Utilities?
Yeah, so we're working with your teams to ensure that we comply with that and we're doing the right stuff.
Okay, great, thank you. The other question is, because you're doing hair product and skin product, when you create those products, are you testing them on animals, or are you doing, are you totally not, I mean, a lot of companies are going away from animal testing, and I was just wondering if you're one of those companies, or if you're a company that actually does your product on animals?
We've never tested any of our products on animals. We use focus groups for our products, so like, our products are shampoos and conditioners. So if we produce a formulation of shampoo and conditioner, we know, we, we have a goal that we want to, that, we have a goal for the experience that we want our consumer to, to, to experience. So we use focus groups. So we'll give them the shampoos, and you, they will use the shampoos for a period, then we ask them, give them questionnaires, and they give us answers, and see whether we've hit the mark. So none of our products really need animal testing, and we've never had the need to, to do that.
Excellent.
So like, like the skincare products will be serums and night creams and all that, so I don't know how animals would help us. So for us, we, we've never had the need to do that.
Thank you. And I, I was hoping that that's what you were going to say. Last question is, and I'm sorry if I'm jumping in, and everybody else probably has questions, is you're going to build this and then bring in production into Stoughton. How many jobs do you think you'll, will create for Stoughtonites? And what are you looking for, just people in the lab? I mean, I guess I'm trying to figure out if you're just looking for packaging people, or is there going to be a way that, that's going to be tiered, that people can start working up into like management, other thing like, so it's not just, you know, minimum wage workers, you have a gamut of minimum wage, you know, middle income and all that, so people actually have, it's a company that a person can start and grow with the company.
So phase one, we anticipate to create a minimum of 20 jobs within the first three to four years. That is phase one. And we are going to have good-paying jobs, and the backbone of our team is going to be our R&amp;D, R&amp;D team, which produces the innovative products that we are reeling to start, and we have a sales team. So those will be good-paying jobs, because they will keep the machines running. We need to keep it at capacity to be able to pay the high interest rates for the $5 million that we will be borrowing. And also a production team to ensure that our processes are streamlined, and we can be competitive with manufacturing in China, so, so that our prices don't go up too, too high. And we'll have a few production jobs, you know, line production, and yeah. So we'll have, a, a majority of the jobs will be very well, very good-paying jobs.
Great, that's exactly what I want to hear. Man, all right, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I'll let, let other people ask questions now.
All the person Reeves?
Just one follow-up question to President Hirsch. When you start expanding your product line and the R&amp;D, do you expect, because it'll be different products besides the shampoo and conditioner, it sounds like, do you anticipate any changes in either any of your wastewater or animal testing at that point, since you're going to be looking at new products?
No, no, I do not.
Thank you.
I can assure you that. I'm assuring everybody, there will be no animal testing at any point.
All the person Legaki?
When you were talking about your locations, and how they were affected during COVID, and what you're hoping for now, I am not certain if I understood, are you planning on utilizing all four of these acres? And is this going to be your main and only base, or are you still going to have other satellite locations?
I didn't, I didn't hear one, one part. Am I trying to utilize all what?
Is all of the land, the four acres, is that your intention, or?
Yes.
So utilizing all four acres? And are you still going to have locations in Illinois, and even international, or is this going to be where all of this business is located?
This, this, we're hoping this is going to be the only location. We're trying to bring those two production processes to Stoughton.
All the person Schumacher?
Richard, we have one other question come up, well, we're in our discussion. We're looking at the preliminary building plan that you had for that, and, you know, noticed that there weren't any emission stacks or smoke stacks, or anything that were above the roof lines on there. Do you have venting and emissions, things that you need to contend with, with working with fragrances and such?
And, and part of the trend in the beauty industry, which I like, is fragrance-free products. So that's the direction we would like to take. So when we come up with a new formulation, what we try to do is not put any fragrance in there, if any of the ingredients do, don't have, you know, an unacceptable scent. And if they do, then we try to put as, as, as little as possible to mask that bad, you know, chemical smell or ingredient smell, one ingredient or a combination of two ingredients can produce a smell that is not acceptable. But most of our products, our new innovations, we're trying to go the fragrance-free route.
Got it.
Because fragrances affect some people negatively, so the more fragrance-free products you have, the better.
Got it.
And that's our goal.
I just saw one, one of yours in there was, was a mint-infused one in there, and that one, I mean, methyl salicylate gets kind of.
Yeah, so the mint is actually, you know, for, you know, for helping with scalp itches and, you know, yeah, that kind of thing.
Yeah, yeah. We just wanted to make sure that people don't think you're making candy canes in there.
No.
Thanks.
No.
All the person Legaki?
Thanks for being here. One of the things I look for in businesses in the community is how they not only run their business, but also are involved with the community as a whole. Do you have plans or a position that is focused on outreach in the community, or would you be open to that? Even things like, you know, fundraising, sponsoring events, you know, buying t-shirts for a Little League team, things like that. How involved have you been historically with the communities you've been in, in that aspect? And what would you be looking to do with Stoughton?
So most of my production is outside Wisconsin, so I haven't been very involved in those in Guangzhou or Homewood, Illinois, but I live in San Prairie, and I support the school athletics department, and during COVID, I, I also sold wipes, antibacterial wipes and masks, and I donated to the school, to the school district, and some Madison schools as well that were struggling with those things, we donated them for free. So I am involved in, in San Prairie, but I don't have any business located there. My offices are in Madison, and my warehouse is in West Bend. Yeah, so, so definitely, we will look at ways that we can interact with the community, absolutely.
All the person Legaki?
You have the right to not answer this question, but out of curiosity, what attracted you to Stoughton?
I gave Mike the, the router to find a piece of land that will excite me, and he It's the positioning of the land, the price of the land, and the size, and the community is a small community, a growing community, and I'm able to reach out to the, the leadership of that community. We've worked very well with your team, and have been very generous with their time, and yeah, it's exciting.
Thank you very much for our hodgepodge of questions.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay, one more?
Just one more. What you had mentioned, and that's just more, again, a curiosity question, that you were thinking when you expand to have possibly greenhouses and hydroponics, I'm assuming that you're going to be growing the different herbs or flowers for the fragrances or for their kind of apothecary benefits for that. Is that where you're going, is making these more, you know, God forbid you want to be in competition with like Evita products, but, but in that realm of looking to using more native plants and other plants to enhance your products? Is that where you were going when you said that?
Yes, we, we will have a greenhouse, and one of the processes that we, we, we're interested in exploring is aquaponics. And one of the, the reasons my R&amp;D team and I wanted to set up that was because some of the ingredients that we use have some negative side effects long-term that, I should say, ingredients that are available have negative side effects that you never know about until when it's too late. So we want to be in our, in, I have, let me back up. I have a, a I have a, a, an advisory board of very experienced individuals in the industry, in production engineers, strategic thinkers, and chemists, and all kinds of people, about six, that helped me to visualize where I'm going and make sure I don't ve from the path that we have set. So one of the things that we've been thinking about is getting to a position where we can do our own mixes, our, create our own ingredients. Our chemist is a, has 30 years in the beauty industry, and he has worked for companies like Croda and, and, and some other companies, and he has been instrumental in creating a lot of the ingredients that are on the market. And that is some of the stuff that we want to work on while we are doing our manufacturing process. And the federal government helps with that, supports that, so that would be a great thing to get involved in. I felt that we should control our own destiny when we are, because we have a philosophy that we want to follow, and the more we can do ourselves, the better.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, anybody else? So as we discuss the finance, we have the opportunity to go into our closed session to talk about the specifics of the offer, and then we'll provide some direction to our, to attorneys, and then we'll probably reconvene with, with you folks and give you an update on where we're at, and hopefully continue the conversation.
Okay. Would you like us to wait?
I don't think you have to wait tonight. You should expect to hear from us, I don't know, this, what is today, Tuesday, within the next day or two anyway. You know, just an update of how things went and what we're thinking, and we'll try to, you like to do in-person or Zoom meetings? Do you have a preference?
Whatever works for you guys.
Okay. So we'll reach out to you and kind of let you know how the discussion went, and, and, you know, what questions the city council has regarding the offer itself, and then we'll, we'll, we'll go forward from there.
I'd like to, I'd love to thank all of you for giving us the opportunity to present and answer your questions, and I hope we've done a good job. Thank you.
Okay, I'm just going to pull the agenda up here so we can look at the closed session language. Anything anybody want to discuss before we go into closed language, or anything from Rick or Matt? Are you part of the team?
No.
Oh, we, we don't have a public discussion, but you can certainly reach out to me tomorrow through a phone call or email.
I'm here from the Spoken Field Club, and I just wanted to go up the trail to the group.
Oh, yeah.
I was in the second chair.
Okay. You got to see the whole meeting. But you heard we're not going to have any snow.
Yeah, please, please, please don't hold us accountable.
Yeah. Okay, so other person, Schumacher, you, you want to do the honors?
Sure enough. I will make the motion to convene in closed session per state statute 19.85, Part 1, Part E, on deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by other person, Reeves. And Candy, whenever you're ready, do a roll call.
Okay, Butler.
Aye.
Legaki.
Aye.
Last now, Scanlon.
Aye.
Thank you. Schumacher.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Garvolo.
Aye.
Jensen. Reeves.
Aye.
Kylie.
Aye.